Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the fierce symbol of our perfect friendship among the valued cultures.
Looks like we have Commissioner Beard going to offer the indication.
Dear Lord Jesus, our Father and Savior, we ask you to guide this body today that we might serve well for the taxpayers of Lenny County, that we might spend their money judiciously. We ask you for relief from the pandemic and especially the government edicts that have done so much damage to so many people. Our schoolchildren, our small business owners, especially our residents. We ask you, Lord, that you be your will to restore this nation to the Christian roots and want to enjoy this nation.
I have not received any prefiled written public comments, and I don't believe there are any public comments in the audience. Seeing none, let's move to item two. IFB RFP bid awards, Mr. Robert.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. IFB 2027 was for the Southeast Loop Road Construction. It was solicited back in December. We opened bids on January 5th and we received one from constructors. It was deemed responsive, and so therefore we're recommending award to constructors in the amount of $4,755,269.26 plus gross receipts tax.
Great. Anybody have any questions? Okay, everything looks good. So I guess I'll entertain a motion that we approve the bid for the Southeast Loop in the amount of $4,755,269.26 plus GRT being awarded to constructors.
So moved.
You have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rudolpha?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta.
No worries. Next item in the, in moving to the trailing agenda is approve the commission meeting minutes from January 19, 2021.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve commission meeting minutes, January 19, 2021.
I make that motion.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rudolpha?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Number two in the trailing agenda is the Treasurer's Report is for information only. It's been posted and shared in the commission meeting package.
May I have a comment on Treasurer's Report? Okay. Moving on to...
Item three is December 2020 Revenue Report, Ms. Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the December 2020 Revenue Report, our gross receipts tax did come in slightly under our monthly targeted amount of 1.1. We got $1,084,000. For oil and gas receipts, we did receive our big equipment check, so we did collect 7.2 million. Majority of that was for the equipment tax. So, right now for gross receipts tax, if you could scroll up, we're really slightly above budget, about $40,000 over budget as of December, so we're pretty much right on target for gross receipts tax. For oil and gas, there's a 42,000, go ahead and scroll up. For the oil and gas, we're right at about $4 million over budget. And really, that's mainly due for our oil and gas, keep scrolling up, yeah. One more. There you go. We're right at about $4 million over budget, and that was really due to the big oil and gas equipment check that we received. We still are coming in over our monthly targeted amount. You'll see there on the right-hand side, we have about $1.2 million monthly. We've been hitting well over that, and I suspect that we'll continue to be around the 1.9, 1.8 million dollar mark at the very least for oil and gas for the remaining of the year. Because we're behind three months from our distribution month, really, we already know what our oil prices are gonna be, so for like December's, that was September's actual oil amount, and as Al was stating, the oil, the oil prices gone up every single month. So I expect that to grow even bigger from the $4 million mark.
So, we have a, Ms. Roberta and I have a, it's not as sophisticated as past Chairman Carlson's tab that he kept here is how far in front we were, but Ms. Roberta and I follow that. Outlook-wise, I think we'll, we'll end, we're thinking, the year about...
About 26 million total, I think.
Which would be over our budget estimate.
About roughly 8 million, almost 8 million.
So, we've been talking about, we can talk about that during the budget process, but we have taken money from reserves to handle the FEMA work, so we need to consider putting that back. We'll look at that as, well, she's gonna talk more about budget here later today, so. Just, I didn't want you to get out there and go, "Oh!" Hang on, hang on. We're doing really good work with the money we have, and we just need to continue to be prudent with that process. So, great.
Any questions?
Are you forecasting?
I think 27 million.
Are you writing that down?
Write that down. 27 million.
Good deal. Ask no questions, we'll move on.
All right.
Oh, I do need an approval for this one.
Yeah, we do.
I guess we'll entertain a motion that we approve the 2020 Revenue Report.
I second that. I make that motion.
I'll second that. Motion second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rudolpha?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
All right. Continue on with Ms. Roberta, we have the budget versus actual for December revenue and expenses.
So I'll just go over this a little bit, because I'll talk more in-depth about this on my mid-year review. But just real quickly, ending December, obviously, we should be at 50%. For revenues overall, we're way over at 70%, and way under at 43% for expenses. For general funds, we've already collected almost 75% of general funds revenue. For December, we collected over $9 million in property tax, so that was the huge push that pushed us way over. On the expense side, we are over at 61%, but that's only because of our transfers out of 25 million. So that's about a third of general fund budgeted expenses. So if you took out the transfers, we've only spent about $19 million, so that would put us about 41%. So we're 9% under budget of actual expenses.
And the transfers out were for projects?
Correct. Majority of that was for road department. So I'll stand for any questions.
Questions? More questions remain? We're pretty good. I'll entertain a motion that we approve budget versus actual December revenue and expenses.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rudolpha? Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the mid-year financial review, and this is for information from Ms. Roberta Smith.
Where's Scotty on the show today, huh? She's just kinda got him all stacked up here.
She's got a lot to say, and this is important to Scotty.
Okay, so this mid-year review, for the new Commissioners, this is something that we do every year. It's usually around the end of January, February, and it kinda just gives a more in-depth look, aside from our regular reporting of where we stand for the mid-year going into the new budget year, because we usually start the new budget in February as well, too. So this presentation really just gives an outlook of kinda where we started the fiscal year on the original budget, where we are as of December, and what our projections are for the end of the fiscal year. So just for a recap, countywide, this is countywide, not general fund, we had a county budget of $123 million. Total salary and benefits were a little over $37 million total. We did not approve or allow the step increases initially in the original budget. However, we did end up approving those in October for a total amount of $160,000. The market increases were initially given at the beginning of the fiscal year for $172,000, and we did still have those 20 vacant allocated positions that remained frozen, and that's back from fiscal year 16, 17, that those positions were originally frozen. And so they're still frozen as of today. And we were coming into this fiscal year with the $12.4 million surplus from the last fiscal year. For general funds recap, the commission did approve a balanced budget of $59.8 million for revenue and expenses. So it was the assumption that we weren't gonna take anything out of cash reserves, approving a balanced budget. The salary and benefits for general fund were $30 million, and we awarded a little over $1 million in capital. And those are some of the items that we approved for general funds capital. Our general fund original outlook was, for oil and gas revenue, we did project $14.8 million and 3.5 in equipment. So if you remember, Al and I projected six months and six months. So we did six months at $25 price per barrel, and we averaged about $9 million, or, I'm sorry, $9 million in volume for oil. And then for gas, we did a dollar and 45 million in volume. And then for the remaining six months, we projected $35 price per barrel and $10 million in volume. And really, we've already exceeded that, I'll talk more about it, but so far this fiscal year as of December, we were averaging $31 price per barrel, and that's only because the first couple of months were really low, they were 14 and 16. And as far as volume, we had been in the high 12, almost 13 million for volume. So we've been exceeding that 10 mil, or that $9 million mark for quite some time now. For gross receipts tax, we originally projected $13.5 million. So that came in about $1.1 million per month. We have been, like I said, right at about that $1.1 million mark. It has been declining slightly. So, I'll talk about it a little bit more, but I do project that we'll probably end up breaking even on gross receipts tax come June 30th. Property taxes, we originally projected at 14.5 million. Now, we knew this was gonna be higher, however, at the time, DFA does not allow you to budget anything. You have to budget what was reported at the fiscal year end, quarter three report, because if you remember, our budget gets approved in May and June, so we don't have those final numbers, so they don't allow you to project or budget any more than you've already received. So that's why we budgeted that 14.5, but we did know that property taxes were gonna be higher than that. Are there any questions so far? So what's happened so far this fiscal year? So really, what this slide breaks down into, we did start off the fiscal year with $60 million in general fund cash. Now, that did include the surplus of that $12.4 million. Since then, obviously, we've transferred that surplus out mostly for the road projects. We've put that towards road projects. And so far, we've had first and second quarter budget adjustments totaling about $1.8 million, decreasing general funds cash. We also just recently transferred $15.5 million out of general fund into the FEMA fund to finish those projects. So really, what it breaks down to is if you took that surplus out of that beginning cash balance, you had $47.8 million. So to get back to the $47.8 million, basically, you'd have to recoup what we've transferred for the FEMA and the budget adjustments, which comes to about $17.3 million. So that's what we're essentially needing to get back to that original cash balance of what you guys originally approved, because you guys approved a balanced budget, meaning you weren't gonna take any cash out of general fund. So if you still wanna hold true to that, we need about $17.3 million in surplus to get back to that point. And I do believe we'll get to that, that point, and I think that's the point Al was trying to make, is we are gonna have a surplus this year, but if we wanna replenish those funds, that will all go back into the general fund cash, if that makes sense.
So the target and objective would be to end the fiscal year at $47.7 million in general fund cash?
Correct.
So, if that's, if that's your desire, and then we'll build the 20, fiscal year '21, '22 budget based on those amounts?
Correct.
So, food for thought.
So we're more than halfway there on building that, building that cash reserve, and we're halfway?
Right.
We're exactly halfway through the year, but okay. So there shouldn't be any issue in meeting that.
Shouldn't be an issue, yeah. We think we're confident, short of a, another tip-over, which, easy, 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 Al.
So some other things that have transpired are some personnel changes. So these are the personnel changes for this fiscal year that will affect next year's budget. So so far, the commission has approved about $300,000 worth of personnel changes that will increase next year's budget. A majority of them are reclassifications, and the other ones were when you guys unfroze the step increases back in October, and then those June service dates that weren't originally included in this year's budget. So those were the bigger amounts, that totaled over $200,000. So where do we stand as of December 31st? As I kind of already stated in the other reports, for countywide, we're at 70% collected for revenue and 43% expensed. General funds, we've collected $44 million. Again, we've collected, you know, almost 74% of our general fund revenue, and we have expensed $45 million for our expenses for general fund. If the fiscal year were to end as of December, and this is just hypothetical, we would be at a $1.3 million deficit. This is slightly different than last year when I was reporting. Last year, we had about an $800,000 surplus as of December of last year, so it's just a little bit slightly different. I think the biggest change this year is our expenditures are way down in general fund compared to last year, but our revenues aren't quite as high as last year at this point. And that's mainly because of oil and gas. So for general fund revenue, oil and gas production, we sit at about $9.5 million, which, again, we're at about 65% collected. And like I stated, we've been averaging about $31 price per barrel with $12.6 million in volume for oil. And we've been at the $2 mark for gas, which, again, we originally projected that at about $1 with $68 million in volume for gas. So, for oil and gas production alone, not as a whole, we're about $2.2 million over budget. For the oil and gas equipment, like I said, we did receive a really huge equipment check for December. So right now, we sit at $5.2 million. We are not gonna receive very much more, I think we'll probably receive about $300,000 more for equipment. So right now, we sit at about $1.8 million over budget for the equipment. Again, gross receipts tax is just right at that 50% mark, so we're really barely over budget on gross receipts tax. And property tax, we've already collected $13.2 million, so we're pretty much 92% collected. That's budget-wise. I'll talk more about property tax, because we are gonna receive a significant amount more on property taxes, but that's just budget-wise of the $14 million that we budgeted for property tax. So for year-end revenue projections, for oil and gas production, equipment, and royalties, right now, general fund sits at about $4 million over budget for oil and gas. If we average about $1.8 million a month for remaining of the fiscal year, we'll be at about 25 million. Now, I think we'll be over that 1.8 million, so that's kind of projecting a little bit conservative. So it'll put us about $7.4, $7.5 million over budget. Because like I said, we pretty much have our oil prices, with the exception of the last two months of the year, because we're three months behind in collecting that, we already have those oil prices all the way up until April, which, again, those oil prices have increased up until the $50 mark. And like I said, the production, we've been at in the high 12 to 13 million. For gross receipts tax, again, we're $42,000 over budget. If we average about $800,000 for the last six months, that'll put us at 11.7. It will put us under budget. However, if you guys remember, we did pass two ordinances for gross receipts tax for the indigent fund in effective January, which would be distribution month of March, because we run two months behind. So starting in March, the gross receipts tax that was being put in the indigent fund will now be put in the general fund. And that will amount to about $1.8 million. So what we're gonna fall short on what we projected, those extra GRTs coming from that indigent will break even about for gross receipts tax. And then for property taxes, we still need to collect a little over $7 million in property taxes, leaving us well over, well over budget for property taxes. It'll be about 21 million. For the year-end expense projections, our general fund expense budget is $74.3 million. So each percentage is equivalent to $743. Now, historically, we have spent about 90% of general fund. If you look back in the past six or seven fiscal years, we spent about 90%. So even if you were conservative and we spent 95%, we'd be looking at about $3.7 million in savings on the expense side. Now, I think that's gonna be closer to $6 million, because if you look at every department, every department is well under budget right now. And there's certain items there that I don't think you're gonna see increase. For example, everyone's travel budget. We have a travel budget of about half a million dollars that we've spent about $15,000 so far because, you know, of the pandemic hit, and nobody's traveling. So items like that, I don't think you'll see general fund expense. So I think that number's gonna be a little bit closer to 6 million rather than the 3.7 million on the expenditures. And all your departments, as you know, like I said, every year, they do really well in spending, and that's why we come in well under budget. So looking forward to FY 21, '22, I do believe we'll have a possible surplus of over $18 million. And that is because I do believe we'll finish oil and gas at least $7 million over budget. Gross receipts tax, I think we'll be pretty close to breaking even, if not a little bit slightly over. Property taxes, again, we still have about $7 million to collect, so I think we'll have a surplus in property taxes. And on your expense side, I do believe that general fund will come in around that 10% mark. So I see it more on the 6 million side. But just for this purposes, I calculate it at $4 million savings and expenses. So really, the next thing we need to talk about, and I think it's the next agenda, is what are the county's priorities for the new budget year, and what are our objectives? And really, that's just kind of a guideline for not only myself and Al, but all your elected officials and your department heads going into the new year budget of how they need to be budgeting. So in summary, from our 1920 surplus, we have about $350,000 left of that surplus. And that $350,000 sits in the capital improvement fund. We need a surplus of about $17.3 million to break even if you wanna have the same amount of money in general fund as you started with. The commission has committed about $300,000 in personnel changes that will go into next fiscal year, so it will automatically increase next year's budget right off the bat. And I do believe we'll have a surplus of about $18 million. Now, again, if you want to hold true to replenishing those funds that we took out, pretty much that whole entire surplus will go back into general fund cash reserves. And I will stand for any questions if anyone has any questions.
Rudolpha?
No, I don't.
I just got a quick question on property, property taxes. Was the increase because of development, I'm assuming? Does that make your increase?
Yeah, and I wish Gemma or Lori were here. I did briefly talk to the Treasurer's Office, and yeah, we did have quite a bit increase on development, so. But I can't really speak to the details of that, I don't...
Carlson? I guess our next agenda item is to discuss the priorities and objectives, I'm sure, but it'll have a lot of input there. I just really appreciate Roberta and Al and each department head coming in under budget. Everybody looks like things are pretty trim, and, and that's a whole group effort. I'm really proud of Eddie County for this report, for the budgeting and for the full-size, even in a difficult year. I don't feel, I don't feel like Commissioner Beard's prayer this morning that we'd be, you know, moderate in spending the taxpayer money. I feel like...
Judicious.
Judicious, there we go. Judicious, not moderate. But judicious, so I...
I would add, so far, so good.
Yeah.
I think, you know, there's, there's been a tremendous amount of work accomplished across the county with the funds that have been put to work. And I think you and many of the citizens have seen the outcome of, of that work and the visibility of the county in other, you know, in our law enforcement agencies and our fire service and other. So, I think the plan that you have approved and put in motion is paying dividends now. And if we stay the course, we'll be able to continue that progress. We have a, a big one-time item that, you know, we put monies towards in terms of FEMA, but that'll be done. And then we'll... Hallelujah. Thank you. But then we'll be able to use those monies for other aspects that needs in the county. So, I think that the process is working, and I think that will lead into the next discussion about priorities and objectives, and then we'll talk a little bit about the budget.
So we wanted to bring this agenda item to you. More for just discussion, like I said, we will be rolling out the budget to the elected officials and department heads either this week or next week. So we kinda wanted just a guideline. This does fall in line with the budget methodology resolution that's in the resolution and consent agenda. Just know, it's just a guideline, we can go and change these items. For example, in the budget methodology, it does say we'll have a balanced budget for general fund. You know, if that is what you guys want, and it doesn't turn out like that, if there's an item that comes up that we need to take reserves out, that's perfectly fine, we can bring the resolution back. But these are just more guidelines and a direction for your elected officials and department heads to have a guideline as to how and what to budget for this fiscal year. So in discussion with Al, we had talked about a few things, and again, this is in line with the budget methodology. But to have a balanced budget for general fund, we do anticipate to include annual step increases, which they usually run about $150,000, give or take. No COLA consideration will be up for discussion this year unless you guys choose to do so. And we would be considering about five new full-time employees with an estimated amount of $500,000 to work with. No across-the-board operational increases, and then capital outlay requests would just be kind of on a case-by-case basis. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what the budget methodology states, but we would like to get your guys' direction on some of this.
For the budget that you approved for the last fiscal year, there were some departments that had some capital outlay that we asked them to pull back. Facilities is one, and there were a couple of others. So there may be some items there that we don't wanna continue to defer maintenance on, on the assets, so we may have to take some of that into consideration. So there may be some one-off stuff. But we don't anticipate that this is a year of plenty, and we'll push forward on, on all departments. I think we're gonna try and hold the line. There are some positions, that's where the five comes from, where one in a department, right, that one was given up or one was held back... right, that one was given up or one was held back or there's another need. So, I think there's a handful of positions that need to be considered. I think detention continues to be a place of opportunity. They get close to being staffed and then there, you know, there's attrition, but I do think they need some help. We had stopped one and traded one of the sheriff's deputy's positions. I think he'll want that back. Anyway, that's kind of where we're at, but it's, there's, I don't see a broad increase across all, all fronts. I think we just need to kind of stay the course, look at our outlook for production volumes and price estimates and not be too aggressive in that space. And we'll talk to you more about that as, as things progress about what those outlooks are. But this is the, this is the place to start and get, get your input as to what you want to see.
Commissioner Cordova, you want to go first or chime in later?
Well, I just want to say thank you, Roberta. This is a very detailed report and I appreciate all the information as well as input from Al. You mentioned detention. Do we have an idea of what kind of positions we're looking at for detention?
Detention has the, the most number of frozen positions. So, we may be looking at, unfreezing some of those. There's been some discussion about the, the medical. There's a, we have a position that's contract. There's some discussion, should we create a new position for permanent? So, that, that's, that's one of them, but.
Is that the psychiatric?
No, this is the medical, medical contract. So, it's the, I think the individual's a certified nurse practitioner.
Just general provider?
Yeah, general provider.
Yeah, right now, we contract that position at about 135,000 a year. So, there's discussion of, you know, not contracting that, making that a full-time position. Majority or all of the positions that are frozen in detention are officers. So, at this time, you're looking at about anywhere from 75,000 to 85,000 to unfreeze one of those positions, that's with benefits and all. So, those are the majority. I think, I don't want to speak for the warden, but there may be a couple administrative positions out there, but that's probably the biggest position that they may want to look at is that medical provider. And you're looking at, you know, 150,000 plus for benefits.
Thank you.
I think anytime that, and I've always thought this during this budget, especially for frozen positions at the, at the, our hotel. Anytime we get close to being at full capacity with, with this actual workforce, I've always thought that they could come back to the board right away and we would unfreeze positions. It's just never been anywhere close ever. So, I would always entertain any kind of thought to get them back into, the more help we can get them, the better. Obviously, our hotel's been, had a very big occupancy as of late and I would like to make sure our guests are accommodated accordingly. The rest of it, it's going to be an interesting year because you see Santa Fe doing its best to really help us out. And so, until we really know what kind of great ideas they actually push through, I'm not really sure how we can consider a lot of this. I mean, if House Bill 4 goes through, we're going to be in such a world of hurt. I don't know that, that a lot of it's achievable. So, I like the idea. I think it's, it's, it's a good idea so far, but until, until we have a good clear picture of what they're going to do to us, I mean, House Bill 4, House Bill 5, they could destroy industry pretty quick and then we'd be in a world of hurt. So, I don't know. That's where I would stand. I mean, I, I think this is a good start, but I think after this 60-day session, we're just going to have to really take a look then and see, see what they've done to us and how we're going to have to pay for it.
Because there won't be any money coming from it.
No, no. They just have good ideas and they take more of our money. But if, if they continue to kill these industries, they're just going to have less money and still want us to fully fund ours. So, I, I'm very nervous about our upcoming budget, considering some of these bad bills that are out there that could really impact what we have to do with insurances if we can be even insure ourselves, which I seriously doubt we would if that one goes through. So, I think we're, like I said, great start, but really until the session's over, I don't, I would just wait.
I agree.
Commissioner Carlson.
I agree with Commissioner Henry that it's great to have a roadmap to get out of town, but to get to our destination, we kind of have to know what the obstacles are and we're not going to know that until after the 60-day session. So, I wouldn't want to set any real goals until we see what's going to happen to the legislature through the 60-day session. I, I don't think it's good business to, to do that until we see what might happen to our largest industry in southeast New Mexico and what kind of stupid things that the legislature can do to it. So, that's kind of my.
Well, we certainly have a target on our back. I don't think anybody, I mean, and that's something I've worried about for a while. It seems to me like we have, and I don't know all of the details, we have a certain amount of unobligated money laying around that I'm sure they'd like to get their hands on in some form or another if we ought to maybe encumber more of that money to protect it. And who knows, you know, if they do what they're doing with the insurance, I don't know. It, it's going to destroy government. I think they know that and I'm not real sure that that may not be their objective. I'm pretty cynical when it comes to anything that comes out of Santa Fe. But I think wait and see after the 60-day session before we make any big decisions is, yeah.
I'm not real sure Commissioner Henry or Commissioner Beard would be more cynical of what comes out of Santa Fe, but maybe we could put some sort of a meter on that. I don't. I think we could probably all be included in that, in that meter. So, as far as my budget priorities and, and objectives, I think it, for me, had been really changed from last year. I think it's relative to public safety, those things. But obviously, all of the commissioner comments are, are correct that we can't get too focused on one thing or another until we know how much money that we have. It looks like we're, we're going to have, you're projecting us to be about 18 million over, which we've got a pair of 17 and change back. So, we've got about 800,000 dollar surplus. So, if I'm understanding that correctly, if trajectory and nothing really changes next year, we could be working with an 18 million dollar surplus. Is that, is that correct?
Right, but that 18 million, you know, if you're wanting it to go back.
Well, the following year, excuse me. So, so, so right now, we're.
So, through the course of the next fiscal year, so we take, we take what we end this fiscal year with and we put our reserves back to 47 million.
Correct.
Right? And then in the ensuing fiscal year, if things hold as they are now, we could accumulate another 18 million dollars to help our process. And we shouldn't have, although we don't know, we shouldn't have any one-time exceptional costs like we've incurred this past year for FEMA and some other things. So, yeah, that's, I think that's a reasonable outlook. I think we may improve our price outlook slightly. The volume outlook will be a little tricky if the things that are occurring now continue. There won't be investment made by those operators and so the production decline rate will increase because there's no capital investment to stay the course and hold the production steady. So, we'll have to look at that closely on, on what's, what's occurred. There are still some duck wells out there that may, may get completed. This past year, in New Mexico, they've, they completed about what the surplus was at the, the previous, so there's still about 3,500, 4,000 remaining, but it was up to like 5,500. So, they, they've taken about 1,000, 1,500 wells out of the duck column. They could continue that, but part of the, if they need pipe, pipeline right away and stuff like that, it's still a kind of a slippery slope right now. So, if there's a moratorium, no investment, production will decline at a more rapid pace. And so, we'll have to try and estimate what that would look like to calculate our revenue income.
The one thing, Al, that I've talked to, heard the BLM, that they were doing about 75 permits per week on, for the last three months of the year in anticipation of what might happen in a new administration. So, there, there are lots of, of permits out there to drill and so that should carry us for a while.
We, we hope. I think there's a, a little uncertainty on industry's part about the ancillary approvals for, you know, APD adjustments or additional rightaways for connecting wells and stuff like that. The, the recent outlets, you know, some of the operators are withholding investment in this interim period here until they know what that landscape may look like. Started with 60-day ban on a federal basis and then there was the moratorium of, oh, let's stop and look, which was, some folks have said it's a year, but there was no timeframe actually in the, in the language of that, that statement. So, we don't know what that means. And so, I think I saw some of the larger operators comment about, yeah, our, our, what it's done is driven investment away from federal properties and onto other properties. So, the operator may choose and.
To drill in Texas?
I, yes, sir. Most of the activity, even though it's leased, right, in southeast New Mexico, most of the federal property is already leased up, right? So, new leases are, yeah, not so much. It's that other component of holding, putting a hold on new approvals.
Access to.
Access to those assets that is causing the concern. And so, whatever they have for their capital budgets, they may take to places where they, there's less risk of being caught out. Like we were talking earlier, you could drill, you have the permit, you could drill the well and complete it, but if you can't hook it up, you're, you're behind. So, I, I really think that these actions are going to impact New Mexico, southeast New Mexico, and particularly Eddie County in a most severe way until there's more clarity about what that means. And it will push those investment dollars out of Eddie County, potentially into Texas or other places, so.
I wonder if we could get our perspective from some of the, maybe one of the smaller operators and then one of the large operators before we start the budget process.
Good idea.
I think we absolutely can. And Commissioner McCutcheon and I were speaking before the meeting. He has, he, he had some feedback from a moderate operator. I saw something in the press for a large operator that suggested what I was sharing with you. But we can certainly reach out to those operators we know in the county and ask them what their outlook is. We don't necessarily care about gross numbers. We just care about.
Perspective.
Perspective. Hold the line, operate as we are, or are you going to be able to make some investment?
Yeah.
And that, that's, it's a huge bar on and we've got to try and get our arms around.
Yep.
You know, one bright spot I see in that, at least in my part of the world, and I'm sure it's other places in Eddie County, these mega pads that they're going to drill two, four, six wells on. There's several of them that the pads are built, they drilled two wells, they're fractured, they're online, the tank battery's in place. They can come in and drill additional wells. The infrastructure's already there to get rid of it. You know, I'm talking TOG and Cimarex, which are a couple of the major players.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's, there is, I would think, a large amount of that that could happen without additional permits.
And, and those are the folks we'd reach out to. The other is, is XTO because they have a lot of pad island drilling in their, in their space. Whether or not they're going to invest or not, don't know that. I mean, Exxon's behind that and there's, there's a lot of horn pulling going there right now, so. I bet you, you're right, but we can find out.
Well, that's limited, but there's a lot of big, tough stakes that I don't think will go anywhere either.
Right.
Any other questions or methodology suggestions? I think we're good to go. This is FYI.
Right. Thanks, Mr. Roberta. Next is Josh Mack with Federal Services. And there's some T-shirts that could give you more detail, but that's what those navy blue T-shirt donations are. So, he'll talk to you about that.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, a couple of years ago, we were contacted by a company out of Keller, Texas called Varsity Sports LLC. They were wanting to help us with recruitment as they know that's an issue across the board, something we've discussed heavily at Fire Board. So, we did receive these shirts just before the agenda requests were put in. So, I just wanted to kind of show you all, there's five different ones. That's why I have so many and if you want to look at them. But that's kind of what they look like. We didn't put our logo on it because we will be handing them out to the community, so I don't want people walking around trying to represent our organization specifically. And then on the back, like I said, all five of them are different. These are all companies that they reached out to that supported us and basically made this possible. So, we received 827 shirts. We'll be handing them out per department to kind of use. Roxanne helped us out with the radio ad for the month, so we'll be on 92.9. I thought we could give some of these to DJ to hand out at some of the little events that they set up around town. So, hopefully this will help get out the need for the volunteerism because obviously with everything y'all are discussing, it's also hit us pretty hard, so if things get worse and people move away, we will have less people obviously to help, so.
So, that's information if you have any questions, but it's a donation and it's, the sponsors are recognized on the backs of the shirts. So, thanks to Varsity Sports LLC for their generosity.
The guys paid to have their names on the back?
Yes.
Correct. All the sponsors, yeah. They're, they're the contributors to the, to the process.
Not necessarily a donation, it's the sponsors paid to have the shirts there and these guys print the shirts.
Absolutely, absolutely. Next item is a budget adjustment on the Sun Country tanker. Josh can talk to you about that.
So, this project was approved a couple of months ago. These change orders have come from the district chief who was working on the project when he was assistant chief. Of the changes, it was all pre-spec on the truck. They decided to change the specifications. Now, they're wanting to go back and re-add these valves. And the light issue that's on there on the, I think it's like 750 dollars, that was a vendor error. So, because it was through 60%, the budget adjustment will have to come out of their fire excise tax. So, I'll stand for questions.
Questions? Questions?
So, we need a, an approval.
Make the motion for the budget adjustment.
A second.
Motion's second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova? Yes. Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thanks, Josh. The next item on the agenda is the resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Got any questions? Any to remove? Do you have enough or do you want to take a motion? Do you approve the resolution agreement consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Your motion's second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova? Yes. Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
In that, in the agreements portion of that was the resolution R-21-20 to support schools getting kids back. I have that here and I need the commissioners to sign it, all five of you, and there are three copies, so I'll pass that around now or Ms. Tara will hurt me.
Can we all go back to school on the eighth?
February 8th. In some form or fashion.
I think, I think you go in two days a week, so.
Awesome. Awesome. So, all those at-home school teachers will get a little bit of break. Hopefully, the internet bandwidth will bring a sigh of relief. Hopefully, the internet bandwidth will bring a sigh of relief.
I tell ya, I have two grandsons over in Las Cruces and they're getting to go back to school, they are so excited.
Big deal.
It is a huge deal. Huge deal.
I don't know if anybody saw the superintendent's video message, but he talked about the disinfection measures that the school has already participated in, changing the filters in the school buildings. I mean, he said that I think we're the only district in the state that had taken those measures, so it made me feel very comfortable about people being back in, so good job to the school district.
All right. Next item is department updates. We have several. Go ahead, Wes.
Morning.
Morning.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I just wanted to let you know that I took the, last week I ran up to Santa Fe and took the Arrowhead study to our legislators and sat down with the majority of them and kinda just went through the tables and got a lot of good feedback from it. Representative Brown asked that if I could get her about fifteen copies so that she could get it to the Appropriations Committee, but they were really excited about it. And I've also talked to a few other municipalities and counties about getting on their agendas so that we can give a presentation. I forwarded that study to the county managers and city managers and have had a lot of good feedback from that also, so.
Thank you, President.
Wes, great job.
And on those counties and cities, I think if you needed any help, I think any of us would go.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd love to do it, but you can do it what you can give.
Okay. In, in talking to them with what's going on right now, the virus and everything, I think we'll wait just a little bit. Some of them still aren't having full meetings and that type of thing, but they, they really want us to come and, and get it out to their Commissions and Councils, so.
So, we'll look at all sorts of ways if it's, I mean, in-person is certainly best because you get to see them, you get to understand, you get to make sure that it registers. But if nothing else, a virtual message where they can ask questions and we can still kinda see them and talk to them. So, we'll, we'll continue to pursue that. Jerry Fanning and Jerry Strong had kinda come up with a little one-pager that summarizes some of that and I'd asked them to give some examples of what's in it for me, what does this mean to me? And so, I, we suggested maybe a ten or a twenty percent reduction in oil and gas monies that would really hammer Eddie County. But if you take that same ten or twenty percent and calculate it out using the NMOGA numbers, you can go to Bernaleo County, four-hundred-and-thirty million dollars in school income from oil and gas from Lee and Eddie Counties. Where are they gonna come up with forty or eighty million dollars more than what they've got now if that happens? And that's the, so, that's the ownership, that skin in the game, so we're trying to get a couple of those tactical elements that makes it easy to see, oh, okay, so what? Why do I care? Well, here's eighty million reasons to care, right? So, we're, we're working on that and we'll, we'll get that buttoned up and showed out, so.
And are we, we're doing that towards each county and city, so if you're sending it to Otero, you're sending Otero here, here's, here's our report, here's how it affects you. Is that how we're doing it? We're making a specific report and we're sending it?
Right, we're trying to help them make that, make that logically.
Understand.
And, and I haven't sent that portion of it out, I've just sent the, the study, but I think when we present it, we'll have all of that in line and, and be able to-
Again, it's just a simple connect the dots, because the study's swollen wonderful. Eddie County's like, okay, so you guys are, ooh, ah, you make the money, yah, 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 so what? Get outta here. Oh, wait a minute, did you know?
I like the did you know part of it.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that did you know needs to come fast because let's take Houseville fifty, if it goes through, these folks have gotta start calling on that.
Yeah.
You've already had a major company say, we're gonna drill in Texas, y'all are good. So, these folks need to see the did you know fast.
We could, we could potentially do that, I might get, it wouldn't matter, I don't care, the, we could use some of the affiliate email groups to share that message.
In Mexico counties would probably be, I could make that happen with Steve Popey and Lloyd from Montana now, so I, I think Mexico counties would be very happy, you know, about pushing that out.
So, we, so we could do that and then we could put the table on the back of the one-pager, list the counties, ten percent reduction, twenty percent reduction, whatever, or make it ten and twenty-five and say, did you know you're gonna have to come up with this? If these, and so we'd have to, we'd have to tie the summary in there, if these provisions persist, this is an outcome. Did you know you're gonna have to make up the difference?
This is their budget, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thanks, Wes.
Our, our legislators had to make a real effort to be able to meet with me also. I've met with one of them in Dunkin' Donuts parking lot.
Over.
There's a fence around the roundhouse and they said, in order to get in, they've gotta go through two different checkpoints just to get in there, so.
Copy over the hood of the pickup?
Yes.
What'd you do? I went and talked to the legislators.
Turns out that's legal. They're gonna-
Exactly. In certain states, fine.
Yeah. All right.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. So, I was just gonna give an update on what OEM has been doing with the schools, working with the schools. We've been, I went to Roswell last week on Tuesday and picked up two pallets full of PPE kits for the schools to help them get back in. They included masks, gloves, cloth masks, and gowns, about forty boxes in total. So, the kids, when they go back, I believe they'll have it, what looked like to be different-colored cloth masks, and I don't know if that's how they're gonna break them up into what they're calling pods, and then also these masks. And so, I guess they're gonna be required to wear those is what I'm understanding. And then-
Those specific masks?
Yeah, these were the ones that were in, in the kits, along with the cloth ones, in different colors. They had purple, orange, pink, tan.
Kids can't take their own masks?
I don't know if they can or not. They were all the same.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's gonna be a rule so that they all have the same masks or what the decision is with that, but. And then also, I was part of what they called a one-point-one-million mask project back in November, and that included the cloth white masks that were donated by Hanes. And those came in different sizes. And then we also did surgical masks for, in adult sizes and also in children's sizes for the elementary schools. So, it's been well over, like I said, last commission meeting, well over a hundred thousand masks that have gone through this office. On the fourteenth of January, we, in partnership with the Department of Health, the City of Carlsbad, I believe, WIP, and the Fire Department from Carlsbad was included as well, we did a vaccination clinic for two-hundred-and-twenty that were, that went through there that got vaccinated. This Thursday, we'll be doing the second dose of that and also some additional doses. We started out with a little bit more and I was informed yesterday by Department of Health out of Santa Fe that they've taken seventy doses from us. So, we're down now to four-hundred-and-twenty. Part of those, the two-twenty will be from the first dose, so that, that will be their second part, and then the, the rest will be for the first dose.
I've got a question on storing that. It's gotta be stored at really, really low temperatures, doesn't it? How's that happen?
The Pfizer vaccination has to be the ultra-cold and it has to be in dry ice, so they deliver it to, we're receiving from a facility in Albuquerque, the Loveless Facility, and National Guard is bringing it, and then they have-
Is that ninety below zero or something?
I think it's eighty, yeah.
Eighty, seventy?
And, the Moderna, the Moderna is a little easier to store, that shelf life, I believe is thirty days, whereas with the Pfizer, once it's out of the dry ice, it's four hours, four and a half hours is what they have to use it. And so, and that's what we used at the clinic, so they kept it in ice chest until it was ready to thaw. Right before you administer, it's thirty minutes, you know, in your hand to thaw and, and prepare it to be able to vaccinate.
Can I ask some questions on vaccination? Because I heard on the radio this morning that Eddie County's the lowest county vac- is that because we're not getting the doses?
That's exactly why.
What's the reasoning we're not getting doses?
I would like to know the same thing, sir.
Okay, good. That's a good thing, because I know that a lot of folks in Artesia and, and Otero County, well, I shouldn't say, are just going to Texas and getting vaccinated, and it seems a heck of a lot easier. So, for some reason, has New Mexico not got this figured out and is this a Santa Fe thing towards Eddie?
Right now, according to what was out with DOH, requested and received, which doesn't mean, what she explained to me, doesn't mean exactly that they were administered, was twenty-two-hundred Moderna and twenty-five-fifty in the Pfizer. Now, on the DOH line, it says three-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty people, thirty-seven people were vaccinated in Eddie County, some fully, some partially. So, some are waiting for their second dose, which is six-point-one percent of the population. What I'm being told by my Lee County emergency manager is that they are at eleven-thousand.
Yeah, they're the number one in the state.
Eddie County is number twenty-eight out of thirty-three.
Is that based on like registration as well?
No, you're encouraged to go into the registration portal to the CVVvaccine.nmhealth.org to register, and the way they're doing it, I think, are, we're at the mercy of DOH right now here. Artesia General has actually been great about stepping up and they are vaccinating a lot of people, I think they're close to two-thousand. Carlsbad Medical has opted not to be a hub for this part, but, and that, so that leaves Carlsbad depending on-
Why would they not do that?
-Department of Health. They had several reasons, there, there's been many discussions, I believe, with the mayor of Carlsbad and Carlsbad Medical CEO, and some of it was the-
Do we need another hub?
Yeah, so, part of it is the, the acting CEO for CMC was, look, we, we're not set up to have two-hundred people show up at ER for, for vaccination. So, we've been talking about, well, can we set up, DOH calls them pot events, and that's what happened on the fourteenth, and that's what'll happen tomorrow. But the county can't, can't acquire doses, you have to be registered in NIMSS as a, as a provider to be able to get the vaccinations and then be able to go and distribute them. We think we could coordinate with different groups, city included, to coordinate that, but we, we just need DOH to agree to whatever NIMSS provider to send the vaccinations so that we can execute them.
The hospital's a bunch of frickin' thugs anyway. The hospital's a bunch of frickin' thugs up there anyway. Those guys drive me absolutely crazy. I can't stand them. They have that recorded, I'm fine with that, but.
So, we can, we can, we can get the personnel to come and administer the vaccinations, we believe, and do all of the other logistical items. We just need support from NMDOH to make the vaccines available for the county or the city to hold these events, and we'd still use the registration process, we'd still use, all of those, all those elements work reasonably well, it's just taking the choke off and allowing the process to occur. So, we're, we're kinda stymied in that, how do we get more vaccines? How do we get them to? We've talked about, well, could we get them through Southwest Pharmacy? Their, their registration isn't quite complete, could we get them through, would, would the hospital be our dealer and we'd, we'd put it on the street, so to speak, right? We're still trying to find avenues to accomplish that.
Have you had that conversation with the hospital?
Yeah.
Who he's talking with?
We had that, excuse me, had that conversation with the Artesia Hospital.
Now, I've been meeting with Artesia General and like I said, they have been amazing
at stepping up. They have gone above and beyond. They've set up an eight-hundred number for people to call that don't wanna get onto a computer and do it, so they've allowed them to call in and they have some dedicated staff to, you know, take their information and fill it in and everything. We did have a clinic with them, an internal clinic went on with them on Saturday, I believe, and then we are planning another one with them for the thirteenth. They will come down to this one on Thursday to kinda get an idea of what, you know, how it works and how, and how we're pushing traffic through and so forth. And then, and one positive thing is NWP has offered to donate a ultra-cold freezer and we're hoping that with the participation of AGH, that that will allow us to order in more vaccinations, because, and, and overall, that's gonna benefit the state, because when National Guard delivers, then that, in case of an emergency coming up or so forth, we're not gonna lose those vaccinations, they'll have a hub to be able to stop and, you know, and house those vaccinations and not have to, to worry about them not getting transported.
So, the feedback right now is, we're stuck in the tier, but on the, on the NMC manager affiliate call, they had a DOH PIO on there, and I asked them, it's like, look, the rural counties can move much quicker than the higher population centers through the tiers. We're, we're bottlenecked, well, the calculation goes, you know, here's your population, here's your percentage, but the state just posted this website that shows vaccination by county? And, so, everything that we were told seems to be nonsense if we're twenty-eight out of thirty-three and we have, we're, we're probably seven in terms of population per county, so how does that work?
And our positivity rate is the heart, like, among the highest in the state.
So, so can I understand this, just because I don't understand medical very well? So, essentially, we have to have a script doctor, we have to have a hub that approves the vaccinations. They say, okay, we're gonna sign the script, essentially, for you to get those vaccinations, and then those have to be administered at that location, they can be administered at any other location. Okay, so the location is not the issue, it's just having the script doctor essentially sign for us to receive these vaccinations?
Yes. And, they had to sign up to become a provider for the vaccination.
Okay, and Carlsbad Medical Center is not a provider?
They-
But Artesia General is a provider.
Yes, correct.
So, well, CMC is registered as a provider, they're in NIMSS, because they've done, internally, they've done their staff, and they've done, they've done some city onesie-twosie kinda things, right? City of Carlsbad. But their reluctance was to have a general public-
I think they're making too much money off of treating COVID patients, honestly, that's what I think.
So, we can, we can go back and talk to the acting CEO and say, would you, would you order twenty-five-hundred doses? And I assume they have a super-cold freezer?
No.
They don't? So, it'd have to, so-
How cold does a freezer have to be?
I believe it's negative eighty. It's the ultra-cold, now we will have that.
Maybe a forty, but they don't add up to negative eighty.
But, but once it's delivered, it doesn't have to be the dry ice ultra-cold, I mean, we could, and they'll deliver throughout the week. I mean, National Guard, Carlsbad Medical has vaccinated several, like Mr. Davis is saying, through the, you know, law enforcement and the fire for Carlsbad side, which is great, I mean, we appreciate that part of it, but we're, we're trying to get more vaccinations in Carlsbad. We don't wanna have to bombard Artesia General. I mean, now, they are willing and right now, we're talking about maybe getting them to come down, since they have clinics, maybe getting them to come down, but they're short-staffed as well. So, logistically, we can plan at the Civic Center and, you know, we can provide people to stick the, the vaccination in, we can provide the people to do the observation part of it. All we need is the vaccinations. And so, I've also been talking to Walmart, they actually did finally open the Walmart Pharmacy here in Carlsbad. Originally, it was only in Artesia and Roswell, Carlsbad wasn't off- Originally, it was only in Artesia and Roswell. Carlsbad wasn't offering that. Um, I did reach out to him in Las Cruces and talk to him, and he, they opened in Carlsbad. And I um talked to them a little bit about maybe partnering with the city and the county to see if we could do a clinic there. However, they're, um, they're, they're short-staffed. They have a couple of pharmacists that are coming back mid-February. So we'll have that discussion down the line and, and see where that goes, but.
So the event that was done on the fourteenth, did two hundred plus doses? And the logistics and the timing, the thinking is, it wouldn't be too much of a stretch to do five hundred doses.
Had we had five hundred that day, we easily could have pushed them through.
So
There are ever teachers in town lined up to go down there whenever, you know, and make that a priority, but we cannot get
That was the other thing.
Real sense.
And I think that's, I'm, I'm still confused, so help me understand. We're not getting vaccines because Carlsbad or the New Mexico Department of Health isn't giving us? Artesia could take all the vaccines if they would just send them. Is that what you're saying?
That's what we've been trying to figure out. Um, it, I was told that we were allotted eight hundred vaccinations for Eddie County. If, if Carlsbad Medical isn't taking any and Artesia General is taking only partial, then where are the rest going is what I want to know. And I can't get a straight answer.
But if that's the case, how come eleven thousand?
Exactly.
Lee County has ten.
They, they are, I did find out that Lee County, Norley, is ordering directly through Pfizer. They are not going through the state. They're not going through Department of Health. So that's another, um
So it could be the Department of Health is, is our hangup.
Not necessarily. I mean, the, well, the state, yes, it is possible.
Two problems I see as far as logistics is personnel to administer it. And I would think that we could line up a lot of volunteers in a short period of time. The other one is storage.
I have a list.
My question is, how cold is liquid nitrogen?
So, so, yeah, do you know how cold it has to be, sir?
It's, uh, says minus seventy and can last uh for up to six months in the freezer.
Well, I know where there's a lot of liquid nitrogen at Everderry in Artesia, if it gets that cold, you know.
So how much can Artesia take? How many doses could they take in stores?
Um, in total, I believe nine hundred and seventy-five.
So we could have taken the whole eight hundred and run some up here. Well, this doesn't make any sense then. Something doesn't add up.
Well, and you got Whip saying they'll give us a freezer, right? You said N W P said they'd send us a, do we just have to go pick it up or?
Yeah, it's scheduled for delivery, and I have it being scheduled to deliver to Artesia only because that was the hub open. And so they would benefit from it. I mean, no one else is going to, you know, house those vaccinations.
That, that delivery's three weeks out, two weeks out.
Yeah, but if we could take nine hundred right now, and we're not even getting our full eight hundred.
What's going on?
What's the box?
So the pizza box is the main shipping element, and that's nine hundred and seventy-five doses.
I believe so.
So if we can store a pizza box and disperse it, then we could order another pizza box.
Nine hundred doses in a pizza box?
Uh-huh, nine hundred and seventy-five.
Okay, so it's like a little big freezer.
It's a
Oh, I don't think we're talking about
No, they're small. I mean, the
That's what they call it.
One M L. It's one M L vials. And they just approved that we can get two doses from one vial. So, you know, I mean, that's also an option because not every vial is, you can get the majority of the time, there's more amount in a vial than what it says.
I think at the clinic, the last, uh, last time, they were saying they could get, um, they, they were supposed to get six, but they were being able to get seven out of one. So
Can we get this, does our legislators have this information to maybe get pressure on? I, I mean, I want somebody to give us what we're actually supposed to
Cause when I heard that, I thought, oh, that figures, Eddie's not going to vaccinate, but, you know, we're
And that's the misconception. The other thing is that we had originally, um, Department of Health had reached out to the schools and they wanted to um vaccinate the teachers before they went in. Well, then somebody at the state decided that that was not going to be allowed. Right now, um, one A and one B, um, you have to fit into over seventy-five or chronic illness. And it, I mean, and the teachers in their original thing that they put out in one B, the teachers did fall into one B. And there's no rule that says you have to do one A for this certain amount of time before you move on to one B. And that's what, um, Alan and I were talking about, that in the rural areas like ourselves, we move into one B and we move phases sooner than, you know, than your Bernaleo Counties or, or the bigger counties, you know, being, having more in one A.
So I, I don't know if we have a contact at Norley, if they would, if they would purchase if we had a place to store and they could get it to Norley, if we could get a pizza box and transport it to Carlsbad, do the event and then just could, but I don't, if they can, if they have a direct line to Pfizer.
Buses and ship people to Seminole and get the vaccine and bring them back.
Well, that's what I don't understand. Why is Texas so much further ahead of us in everything?
Well, they don't have to register, first of all. There's no registration. You can just go.
Well, then why don't we, why don't we register?
Again, right now, the registration is the only way you can get a vaccine.
We just, you know, we just have COVID buses every day and just line up for, go to, we don't have to transport anything but people, and people don't have to be transported at negative seventy. So, sounds easier.
I'm open to any ideas.
Look back to, you know, the story to the stuff. You know what liquid nitrogen is for, and it works very well. I don't know how cold it gets.
I'd love to know.
But you can get it right down here.
Understand, and whomever we can reach out to, because if we could take nine hundred, and they're not even giving us our full eight hundred, there has to be a reasoning for that. I would love to know the reasoning. Because that's, that's affecting our citizens, and that's not right.
Yes.
Not at all. There's a lot of folks that want vaccination. Our teachers want vaccination. Everybody does. And they can all drive to, to Love it this afternoon and get it. Why? Why, why is, I'm serious. I mean, I love Texas, but I'm tired of getting beat on everything.
None of us are upset up here, so.
No, it is very frustrating, and especially when we have, um, we have a group of E Ms that talk um from the south end of the state. And you have, you know, Lorenzo in Lee County talking about how many he's doing. I mean, and even at Curry County, I think they, they did five thousand in, in a week, you know, and, and here, we're struggling to get two hundred or two twenty. Now, again, it is Department of Health that is putting those clinics on, and we're just helping with those. But if we could get a provider to partner with, with us, with the city, I mean, I know the mayor is, you know, trying his best too to look at different avenues as to how we can get more as well. But I have been working with Artesia General. They are willing to help out, um, you know, as soon as they can. But again,
Why is it, why is it taking, because if we can just go to Norley over here and they say, hey, we're getting shipments ready from Pfizer, they obviously know how to do and what to do. They know how to do it, they know what to do and how to do it. So why do, why is our freezer three weeks out? Because if we could set something up like you said at the Civic Center, get Norley to essentially pull the dope for us, right? Ship it over here, and then we can have our people administer. I mean
It, it goes back to the NIMSS registration. You have to, whoever the provider is, has to actually put in the information into the NIMSS system. And we don't, without being a provider, you don't have access to
But can Norley be our provider? Norley be our provider?
That would
Potentially, if they'd agree to do it.
I mean, you try that?
I mean, they don't, I mean, they just sign the, you know.
Seems like we're overcomplicating something that's pretty simple.
Yeah, it ought to be pretty simple. I mean, it's
I mean, if we could get eight hundred a day, you could, eight hundred people in this county want this stuff a day. I would think that'd be pretty simple.
Yeah, there are plenty that are on list waiting.
Why don't we get our act together?
It's not right. It's not fair.
Get our act together. Like, this is absolutely ridiculous, and I'm not saying specifically
No, I completely agree, sir.
No, it's this state.
Well, it, I guess, to
But Lee County's together.
It's not for a lack of trial.
For the Texas thing.
So it's not the county, it's Norley. Norley's the hub that's done all of that, right? So that hospital has taken an initiative and gone direct to the provider. And whatever arrangement that is, I don't know what they pay for it, I don't, but that hospital's made a decision. Our hospital has made a decision.
That's right.
Artesia General has made a decision, right? So as a county or as a city, we're, we're hamstrung by the process of obtaining vaccination. We're, we've, we've expressed multiple times a willingness to coordinate
To our medical provider.
And, and the state NMDOH process.
So it sounds like Artesia's willing to do whatever it takes. So if we were to get Artesia in contact with Norley and then just skip the state, because we obviously have no clue what we're doing to get the doses. Maybe Artesia could do what they're doing and we could just do it ourselves and forget about the state.
Yeah, and we are planning a clinic in Artesia um the middle of March. Um, but again, it goes back to the phases and how much, and at this present time, I believe they are getting their vaccinations from Department of Health.
But if they were to do this, can all of a sudden do the phases matter anymore? Or since we're not in the state, if you're a teacher, you can get a vaccine, we can vaccinate everybody.
That's what I just pulled up the tiers to see. I mean, it's available to teachers. We're in phase one B right now. That's individuals seventy-five and older, sixteen with risk of public complications, frontline essential workers, including K through twelve educator staff and
But according to DOH with this clinic, it is only one A, seventy-five or older or chronic medical conditions. Now, what happened last clinic was that we had, we had leftover vaccinations at the end. And the way we were able to include some of those people is that they call Santa Fe and they have some type of system set up to where if you're registered through that portal and you qualify under whatever guidelines they have, then you'll get a text saying, um, you know, we have a vaccination available at this address in the next hour. You know, please reply, or whatever it is that they send out. And so we were having people at the end of the session um show up for the leftover vaccinations. But we also ran out by three o'clock, so.
But here's the thing, if, if Norley has vaccinated eleven thousand people, then there's some way around the rules that DOH has put on us. I don't know if the county needs to, to pay for some vaccine. I don't know what they cost, I don't know what arrangement they have. And I, and I, and I don't want to step over anybody's toes here. I would say it's probably the desire of the commission to have this be your only focus and figure out how in the heck we get around these stupid rules that are placed on us by states when we get people, essentially, especially teachers and educators. If we get a window to go back, just make this your only focus and just be a bulldog and figure out how in the heck we go around any of the stupid rules that they play, that they give bulldog. I like he says it. I like he, I like he says that wearing a blue shirt. John is wearing a blue shirt, so I don't know. It's confusing to me, um, how he says but, and I don't, I don't know, Mr. County Manager, I'm not trying to give direction directly or anything like that. I am so frustrated. Especially with our hospital, it sounds like our hospital is essentially holding us hostage. They won't sign up for it. And I think it's just about their own pockets because they are making more money treating COVID patients than they would be if they inoculated them or vaccinated them, whatever. And then so, and then we have Artesia that is doing, they're open and ready for business, but they're only getting, you know, ninety percent of the vaccines that they ordered. And then we have, and we have Norley Hospital in Lee County that says, hey, we're open for business. I'm going to order directly from the manufacturer, whatever Pfizer sends them eleven thousand doses. And they just handle their own business. They don't worry about the state. They're not going through those same deals. So I don't know how we, it sounds pretty easy somehow, but there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I'm sure I'm really mad right now, so. And, and I, and I probably said things that I shouldn't have said, but I tell you, uh, this is, this is unacceptable. This is completely unacceptable.
And it is. It's frustrating. On a daily, I mean, my office, I get phone calls asking, you know, with the community, asking where they can go to get vaccinated. And I have nowhere to send them right now, you know, and I can't, I mean, the pods that the DOH are putting on right now, they are not open to the public. You have to be registered through that portal, and then if they have leftover, you know, that's when you'll be notified that you have an appointment. And so, like, but we are, I, I have been trying. I mean, I've called Walmart, um, working with A G H, uh, working with Department of Health, um.
I think, I think if you went to Norley and asked them what, how they did it and what we needed to do, that the commission would be on board with.
And the E M over there, Lorenzo, is willing to help us.
Say, hey, where's the roadblock? Get our stuff from Norley and see if they want to sign stuff. Where's the roadblock? And we'll figure out how to go through the roadblock. If there'll be our script guys, we'll put it at the Civic Center. Multiple churches have offered as well, I know. So, I mean, there's ways that we can do this, so I just
Yeah, I think if Artesia's willing to do it and do exactly what they're doing, I'm with you. I don't know what this stuff costs. And obviously, that would have to, I'm sorry, Roberto, this probably freaks you out. This would have to come back to the commission. But if it's within a, if it is a cost thing and we could have, I want, this is killing the economy. So if it costs us this to get it going again, that's a no-brainer.
And they ask for insurance information. So the vaccine is billed back to your insurance company. And I mean, I don't know how that works if you don't have insurance, but the majority of people that are receiving it, like I said, it's getting billed back to insurance. Because it should be free. Under, you know, vaccination protocol, it's considered preventative medicine, and it should be one hundred percent covered.
And the explanation I received from that is the same as the testing. The test was free, but the service is not, so.
I'm with, since our chairman has volunteered you to take this head on, uh, would it be appropriate for you to ask for volunteers with that in the county to help with logistics and put this deal together? I think it would benefit us heads up from full bore head.
I have the vaccinators, I have the observation people, the location, the city has opened up the Civic Center. Um, right now, there's tables set up for the, uh, for the stations. Um, we'll have seven stations that are being set up. The traffic is, the cones are going to be out. Everything is set up. All, all that's missing is the
And if it helps, I have a walk-in freezer that I can have delivered by about four o'clock this afternoon. It is a negative forty degree freezer.
Okay.
And if you want it, I will put on a trailer and have it to you in four hours.
Okay.
And I think we need a full press release. I want Eddie County to understand why. Because when I heard that on the radio this morning, I thought, oh, why are we last? Why, I mean, is it because anti-vax? Is it, what is it? And now to hear this? That's infuriating. So I think there needs to be a great press release, release to show, here's what it is. If y'all want to get vaccinated, here's where the bottleneck is. And it's not the federal government, which our governor continued, well, she won't anymore, but continued to say, it's not, it's us. It's the state of New Mexico that's bottlenecked.
And don't be afraid to tell them that the hospital is not doing anything to help.
I think we need to advertise our hospital as well, yes.
They did send, um, the first clinic, they did not send anybody to help, but this time on the fourth, on Thursday, they are sending four people to assist um, two with vaccinating and two with the clerical.
Do we, Cass, need to do anything as far as a vote, a motion, or what have you to extend some of
Give direction.
Pretty direct.
Only got to vote on it.
She seems to
What's being done is, is you're going to do everything you can.
Absolutely.
And I don't think you're telling her anything new. She's going to She's a proactive woman, and she stays after it.
Well, a thing that she needs to know is she has to
To get support.
Yeah.
Of the commission.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, wherever the, wherever the roadblock is, we will, if we need to do a special meeting in two days, we'll come back and solve the roadblock. We don't care.
We're here to do that.
Whatever we need to do to help you, you do a great job, so.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
Thank you, thank you.
Do, do we need a wash?
Yeah, like a
Azoo, hustle.
Hope whoever comes up next, big brother. That's next department.
Better only have good news from here. Who's coming next? Actually, what Gashi coming? Upstate, the space that just in Texas.
Well, I don't kind of, you know.
The serum, then we'll just be right across state line.
You know, if this minus seventy is a problem.
Teamwork, that's the objection, I think, that I heard well now.
And I think liquid nitrogen will be the
So just a couple of quick updates. Um, for January, we had
It works.
Or eight structure fires total and one dumpster fire between the city of Artesia and the county. Most of ours were up north. We did have one down south in the valley last week. Volunteers did great work. The task force was able to investigate and determine five is accidental, two as incendiary, and one is still under investigation. So we're still producing good output. Um, we were able to get the fires out. We've worked hand in hand with code enforcement as most of these properties are code enforcement issues, which raises concern for neighbors in the area. So we're really trying to push that, get things cleaned up. Um, the other thing is, is Commissioner Carlson, uh, Mr. Davis and myself will be meeting with the Village of Loving on the twelfth to discuss what we're going to do with their fire department over there to hopefully get something done. I know we've been working on that for a couple of years, but I think we finally have some momentum going forward, and we're working with Cass's office as well, so. We'll, uh, see what we can get accomplished. Hopefully, by next month, we'll have something to bring to you with the final, this is the direction we need to head to get this fixed. Right now, Otis and Malaga and my office staff is doing the best we can to cover that area, plus the county portion that plus the county portion that they helped us with in the past, so that's all I've got. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Brian, Ms. Roxanne, you good?
Nothing different from last week's search.
All right.
Are we going to do the legislative update in this one so we could talk?
Yes. So, Ms. Carol, you good? All right, so, um, next item of business is a travel request consent agenda.
Any items to pull?
Just one item there.
Make a motion that we approve the, I'll entertain a motion, then we approve the travel request. Travel request. Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Aren't we still in department updates with Jerry so we can, that's what you asked, if we could talk, right?
Yeah, but if we go to legislative, we can't talk. That's what we decided last meeting, so we were going to make this department slash legislative update.
Right.
So we could talk next report.
The legislative department is.
We'll change that on the agenda.
I don't know that a thirteen legislative, legislative updates, that you can't talk. I think you can visit with him. And I was mistaken because the next one says legislators let officials comment, so this isn't a comment section. It's actually an update that I think you have the ability to go ahead and inquire, but it.
Okay.
This one, this one, we can now, anyway.
We can do it here, and then we'll do the other one, and we'll go from there.
That sounds great.
Right.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, I was just wanting to give a little disclaimer. If I start shaking and quivering a little bit, it's because I've been off my computer for two hours. That's a joke. Okay. But anyway, uh, a strange point, a strange happening last night. Uh, trying to keep this light, it's really tough. When I went to bed, there was three hundred and fifty some odd pieces of legislation had been introduced. I woke up this morning, there was five hundred and sixty-nine. So that's pretty scary. It's pretty scary. Uh, they are, uh, working hard and fast. And of course, one of the reasons for that is, is the Senate and the House have not been meeting on the floor daily to introduce legislation. So they're coming out in, in lump sums. And yesterday, the Senate gave us a little over a hundred and sixty some odd in their floor session. So, uh, so we're, we're going to see today, uh, the, the House meets on the floor at eleven o'clock, and I'm sure they're going to have a bunch more for us. Uh, the Speaker had actually said he wanted to see three hundred and fifty pieces of legislation maximum. On the House side, uh, we have about two hundred and fifty some odd as of today that, and so probably he's going to make up the difference today. Try to, try to help the Senate out. Of those five hundred and sixty-nine, which I'm, another disclaimer, I haven't had a chance to go through those, all those hundred and sixty yet. They were introduced yesterday, but currently, I'm tracking a hundred and eight of those. So you say, why? Well, because there's a hundred and eight of them out there that I saw as of yesterday in my daily business that had, could have or might have some type of effect on the county. Not that they'll ever find the light of day. I want to make that clear, but at the same time, we have to know what bush they're covered up in. And watch, and that's what I do every day. I'm, I'm tracking this, uh, per committee, per, per bill, and to make sure where they are on the agenda, because that agenda changes. They only have to give us twenty-four hours notice before that changes, so it can change in twenty-four hours. So there are a few bills that have more potential than others, uh, maybe affecting us, and we've already heard probably more than you want to hear about House Bill Four. One of the things I might say about House Bill Four is, is yesterday on the New Mexico Counties, uh, call for the lobbyist, I can say every county is opposed to this bill. Uh, it stinks. It's bad. Uh, it, it does away with qualified immunity for, for basically all of the municipalities and everyone, uh, which means, guess what? Uh, nobody can defend against anything. It's a field day for attorneys. Uh, it drives, if nothing else, it drives up insurance rates on those counties that may be good actors and not have problems. Uh, they're going to be paying the same for insurance as the people that are bad actors. So it is bad. We hope that, uh, we hope that we see that come about. There were rumors that it's trying to be amended. I have a great saying, there's no such thing, there's no way to fix a bad bill, so, uh, hopefully they just keep trying to fix it. Uh, it is a speaker bill, which we don't want to ever forget that. Uh, the speaker, I believe, and this is Jerry's opinion, which Commissioner Henry has asked for before, and I'll give it freely today. I think it's an axe that the, that the, possibly that the speaker could be holding, uh, uh, because he knows it's bad, but he has a lot of other people that want other things, and he may be doing that. That's just free. I won't charge for that at all.
And what's he got profession?
Excuse me?
What is he got profession?
File attorney.
So he could benefit from it? I was just curious. That's just.
Uh, he is an attorney, and it is, it is a favorable bill as far as I'm concerned, and others that were expressed that opinion. And I don't know what Cass's opinion is, but it's pretty favorable for attorneys who are looking for a reason, a reason to, uh, to retire on. Uh, it did go through the state government elections in the Indian Affairs Committee on Monday, and it went on a five to three party line vote. It's now in house deissary, and it's appearing to be on the schedule. It's not appearing on the schedule to date. Uh, it's not on there yet. So, uh, it's, it is, it is supposedly re, you know, it's, it's drawing opposition from both sides of the aisle, though. Uh, people don't like it.
So before you leave that one question, New Mexico Counties has provided a couple of draft resolutions in opposition of this particular bill. Um, if you would like, I'll bring that to you at the next commission meeting for approval. I asked about the effectiveness of those kinds of resolutions, and, and MC Steve Copelman and, and, um, Brian Moore and Grace Phillips all said, yes, they do make a difference when you share them, share them broadly. And if there are any others that you think Eddie County Commission should, so, have resolutions of support or resolutions of opposition, let us know, and we'll, or we, we can make some recommendations and bring them to you for the February sixteenth, fifteenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, commission meeting.
I've just got one thing. Jennifer, don't, don't feel like you need to stay here and finish out the meeting just to be polite. Listen, if you only get to work on COVID, I'm fine. I'm fine if you just pick up late. No problem with that.
All right, another bill that's kind of near and dear to my heart, and I'll explain that later, is Senate Bill eighty-six. And this is the use of, of freshwater for oil and gas operations. Uh, I affectionately recall and call this bill as a, as a wolf in sheep's clothing. And the reason for that is, is the first paragraph deals with the use of freshwater in the oil patch, okay? Which is a big issue, as you can only imagine. Uh, there, there is a need to use freshwater out there in certain circumstances. In some circumstances, it's all that's available. Uh, the other part of that is, is the reasoning behind that is, is it takes water away from, uh, you know, drinking water and, and potable uses. The oil and gas industry uses a, a tenth of the amount of water, freshwater in the state compared to all other uses, okay? So that's kind of it. The other part of that is, if they do away with that, guess what happens? Same people move across state lines, start pumping our water out from under us and selling it to the oil and gas industry. So we lose tax money. We lose work. We lose a lot of things. The rest of this bill is where I call the wolf. It's big wolf. It deals with all types of rules and regulations, uh, for the OCD, and it codifies those rules into statute, okay? It is ridiculous. There are already numerous rules in there that cover basically everything they have set out in this bill. The thing that, that scares me a lot is, is that they've, they've applied, uh, fines to spilling the fluids and things in the, in a, in the field on a price per barrel basis. So what that means is, is that if somebody has a water line that bursts, a produced water line, and it spills ten thousand barrels, okay, before they ever go on site, they're going to be fined X number of dollars per barrel for that. They still have to clean it up, okay? So what's wrong with that? Well, what's wrong with that is, is does it even pose a risk to anything? Uh, does it pose a risk to human health, uh, environment, or groundwater? A lot of cases out there, and I helped write the rules on Rule twenty-nine, all of that's in place on the spill rule, okay? The storage and use of produced water. There's a lot of things in here that are already covered. It's just something else to kick our industry down and put them further down and cost them more money and more regulation. The other part of that is, is how do they administer those, those regulations and rules? I can tell you there are hundreds on the books of the OCD right now that they have asked, operators have asked for closure on, and they can't even get them to act on. So it makes them think this is going to do anything any different other than drive industry out of the state of New Mexico for those reasons. I was asked yesterday by Steve Copelman and Brian Moore on the call if we would put together some talking points for them on that, and I'm in the process of doing it for New Mexico Counties, and, uh, hopefully we can make some headway on it. I contacted, uh, Mike Gallagher with Lee County, and he's also working on the same type of thing, so we're working on that together. Uh, it, it, it's bad news, okay? Any questions on that?
How much support does the produced water bill have?
Excuse me?
How much support is the produced water bill? I mean, is it?
It's a freshwater bill, by the way.
Excuse me? It's a freshwater bill.
It's called the freshwater use bill.
Okay.
But like I said, it's only the first paragraph of that, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of it has to do with all the rest of these rules and regulations and codifying them in statute instead of under rules and, and applying the, and applying the, uh.
In committee, who's behind it? Who's driving it and how much?
Uh, who's driving it? Uh, uh, three guesses. First two don't count. You know, we, we see folks up in there that like the Lopez and some of those that are pushing some of these types of laws. Okay. Uh, and, and, and I hate to say this because that's a, sometimes that's a tricky question during this session. It's what makes it very challenging, is who's supporting it?
Well, I mean.
Whoever's on that side of the aisle.
Does it, does it have, I mean.
Does it have legs?
Yeah. What, what, what is it percentage of the likelihood of it being passed?
With the.
However you say that.
We had a win the other day. Uh, we got a six-five vote and lost in energy, okay? Uh, that's, that's kind of a, kind of cruel humor, but at the same time, it's true. So here's what we're seeing happening with all these bills up to this, up to today, okay? It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what the bill says. It doesn't matter how bad it is, like House Bill Four, okay? Prime example. Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter what it says and how bad it is for the citizens of all of New Mexico. It's going to move through. If it's on the agenda and a platform agenda, it moves through committee. The only hopes we have, and I hate to say this, but some of the only hope we have is when it does get to the floor. And not anything's hit that floor yet, except for feed bill, okay? Senate Bill Two, uh, this one is, is, uh, and like I said, it's, it's raised its ugly head again. It's a radi, it's a radioactive waste consultation force, uh, uh, task force, which is carried by Senator Steinbrenner. It's the same one we saw last year, which, uh, tries to put together a, a task force to review any, any, uh, permit to dispose of radioactive waste in the state of New Mexico. Uh, it hits really home here in southeast New Mexico. Uh, it's the same thing. It came up last year. Uh, it went through committee, and by some hard work, it got killed on the floor. So, uh, hopefully that will happen again. I can tell you that Lee County is actually putting together, also working on some resolutions to oppose that piece of legislation. Uh, not to talk a lot about Lee County, but I just want to tell you, because I talked to Mike yesterday, but they are also, uh, have also drafted a, a resolution to present it to their board on Thursday, uh, that's actually to the president, opposing his stand on clean, on the greenhouse gas and climate change rules that he's put forward. So they're doing that. Uh, Senate Bill one forty-nine, uh, came out, and that's, uh, that's also by, hmm, Sadiel Lopez, who prevents fracking, uh, uh, license and up to a four-year moratorium, moratorium, okay? That's come out. We're watching that one closely. Uh, one that I probably the sheriff will want to talk about because he hasn't talked to any today, and, and it's House Bill one ninety-three. And I had a little bit of conversation about that. That's the, uh, that's the red flag bill, and, uh, it's come back up again and, uh, has some really trying to fix it. I'll let you explain that if you want.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to let him talk about that because that's, that's his department. He can explain it better. All right, it's a, it's a big problem. Good morning, everybody. Um, and, and thanks for your time. This, this, and there's some other bills that I'll talk about when I get, gets to my point, um, my part. But this is an issue that, that, I guess they're fixing one thing that makes sense is they're redefining law enforcement officers so that district attorneys and their staff are not law enforcement officers now, which that was kind of interesting. I visited with Diana Luce yesterday. But the problem is now we're going to, we don't even, to do this, we don't even need a complainant. We don't even need someone to make a complaint. A law enforcement officer can do this directly. Well, we can already do it. We can already go and petition for these things. The problem is, this bill, this law stinks, and it's dangerous. Because what happens is you go in and you say, okay, this person, uh, Mark Cage, is, is dangerous, and he needs to have his, uh, firearms and ammunition taken away. Okay, well, nothing happens then. It goes before a, a judge. The judge says, this, this, this is good. Okay, we want to do this. We want to make this happen. Well, now I get told, Mark Cage, I get told, in forty-eight hours, we're going to come get your stuff. The whole point of this bill, of this law, is to keep people from harming themselves or others. Now, I'm the sheriff. I've got a lot to lose, right? If, if I have my weapons taken away from me and I get smeared all over the, the, I mean, anyone sitting here could happen to you. And you, it gets all over the press. I've got a lot to lose. Well, if that's going to happen, what do I have to lose from offing myself or offing somebody else or doing all this other violent things that I could do in forty-eight hours if I am as unhinged as we're saying that I am?
So they tell you forty-eight hours before they come get it?
Forty-eight hours. That's in the law.
Give you a heads up.
Give you a heads up, and then we get to go over there and, and confront you.
The barricaded lunatic.
Exactly. And so, um, everybody's heard of suicide by cop, right? You're going to ruin me? You are going to ruin me personally, and I'm already, I, I already, I, I am in a, a mental crisis. What have we just done there? We have just exacerbated the situation. We've just turned this into a, it may not have been that bad. We've also violated due process because the individual has been accused of something, an action is being taken against them, depriving that individual of their personal property, of a civil liberty, without being able to defend themselves.
Then they can go back to House Bill Four.
Go back to House Bill Four, and the family sues us and we all, and, and the county goes broke. There you go. So what they're doing now with this is changing it to where, it, it's just, it's, it's a horrible law. It is a horrible law. There are other ways to deal with this. We have other ways. They're also putting law enforcement, once again, they're, they're giving us one more thing that we, we have to deal with, which is evaluating somebody's mental capacity. That's not what we are trained to do. And as a matter of fact, that's an insult to all mental health professionals that are out there who have gone to school for years to learn how to evaluate people, and you're going to take some cop and say, hey, man, here's a, here's a, a one-day course. Go tell me if that person's in mental crisis and how to deal with them. So we're, 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 you know, on one, on one side, when you start looking at, let's defund the police, let's do this. We're a bunch of ham-handed, uh, Neanderthals who can't even decide when we should use force or not. Yet on the other hand, we're expected to, to act as if we have a degree in mental health and go and evaluate people and, and, and work on that, that premise. So thi, this is my problem with it, and it, this, this whole law is wrong. There's other ways to deal with this, yet it's open season on law enforcement, so let's go ahead and do it.
Ben, you're evaluating them as you're taking their guns and bullets?
Oh, no, at that point, it, we're not evaluating.
Oh, you're done.
Yeah, we're, that, that's been evaluated, that, without your, your opportunity to defend yourself, to say, no, I'm not. This is a lie. There's a lie. There's a lie, and I can prove it. No, that's, now we're going.
Plus, when you get there, you give me forty-eight hours notice, there's not going to be anything to take.
Either they're not going to be anything to take, or you're going to be fortified and ready to, to do battle.
Barricaded lunatic. That's what you're dealing with.
My stuff will be in Texas.
Okay.
I'll be there.
No, I have not seen that one.
Okay. All right.
All right, um.
I don't know how much more we can take, guys. I'll be honest.
I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to try to finish.
Well, I got a little more for you.
I'm going to try to finish on a positive note. I promise that. So I just, I, I really struggled to do this. Senate Bill two twenty, which I was just asking the sheriff about if he's, if he's aware of it or not, but, uh, uh, Senator Cervantes had just introduced this yesterday. It's exceptions for body cameras. Uh, so what they're trying to do is kind of what I mentioned a while ago. They're trying to go back and fix a bad bill. And this is, to me, a bad bill because what it means is, I read it briefly.
And this is, to me, a bad bill, because what it means is, I read it briefly this morning, it makes no sense. So they're trying to backtrack, see what they can do to try to help, you know, law enforcement's being required to have these body cameras. So I'm not gonna hit on that anymore. Okay. Try to come up with some good stuff. And the good stuff is, what we think is a good stuff. Senate Bill Thirty-seven. It's Construction Manager General Contract Act. This should help us accelerate our road projects. These are all road bills. Good road bills. And then the N M O D T is supporting that. Wes and I have been talking a little bit about these. He feels like they're good. From what I see, they're pretty good. Then we have Senate Bill Twenty, which is a transportation project fund. This puts eighteen point seven percent of the voter vehicle excise tax into a a fund for roads. And it's a ninety-five-five match for shovel-ready projects. So that looks good on the surface. These are all looking really good. Senate Bill One Twenty-one. This is for state transportation bonds for for the bonding of these projects, and it's allowing for two hundred and thirty-four point six million dollars to issue bonds for statewide road projects. Okay? Now, I say all this is good, and I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna give this opinion, is because I know that our guys have a great relationship with the D O T right now. And and I'm just gonna give them kudos, because I talked to Justin up there, who's Assistant Secretary, some of those folks, the, you know, Wes and and those guys are just doing a great job. So they they understand our needs, and this gives them a little bit of latitude in being able to help us down here with our road projects. Okay? A couple of others. Yesterday came out, was really interesting. I know you you're very appreciative of this, but Senate Joint Resolution Fifteen, which Senator Pertle introduced, which is giving and allowing the counties to secede from New Mexico. I understand there may be a.
That one was signed earlier.
I understand that there may be a few legal, uh, issues to overcome there, but we have a great attorney on staff, and I know he's gonna be able to overcome those, so I feel good about that. Thank you, Cass. Senate Memorial Nine, also introduced by Senator Gallegos yesterday, and this is a study on economic benefits of southeast New Mexico. Al and I had a conversation about that. It's a good segue into our Arrowhead report that we've done, and and so we we can, we can talk and we can do whatever we want to about that. Yes, the last thing I want to finish on is I appreciate your patience, but one thing I want to ask. Is there anything that you would like to see me do differently in my reports? Last week, I realize it was kind of a short deal, but it's getting crazy right now. So is there anything that any of the commissioners would like to see differently?
I appreciate the information. I really do.
Excuse me?
I said, I appreciate the information.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I know Wes went up last week and had donuts on the hood of the truck with some of our folks, and I appreciate that. That's a, that's a great, a great effort. About the only thing that I'm being able to do is through email and texting while they're in committees and before committees. I can tell you that our legislators are very responsive. They're very proactive, and we've had some good, we've had some input that they've passed on in committee and things like that, and I'm and I've expressed that appreciation to them. I I have, I visited with Al yesterday, and I've been visiting with a lot of my other lobbyist friends that actually are in Santa Fe, that live there. That's their life. And they're highly challenged at this session and and the effectiveness of what we can get done. When you see something happen where you have three and four thousand emails, which are now coming in to these legislators on each individual subject, it's very hard and challenging for our legislators to be able to digest all of that and try to get through all of that. So there's, it's very limited of how much time we can have with those legislators to talk to them and and voice our points. So I am putting together some talking points on some of these bills for you, for the commission, and you'll be seeing those in the next day or so. But if there's anything there that has on your radar screen, let me know, because like I said, I have a hundred and eight of them right now, but of those, there's probably a short list, about ten or twelve that we're really tracking closely, that could have have some type of effect on us. So every day, to let you know what happens, before the day is a schedule that comes out that twenty-four hours, and I go down to see how those, how each one of those bills we're tracking looks on the schedule and where it's falling. And then I'm trying to follow those six or eight committees at a time to make sure that I'm getting to those legislators, if it's something that's really of importance to us, and then also find out how they're voting, so I know how to follow it down. That's what I'm doing, so I'm just letting you know.
One thing I'm finding very hard, maybe you can either help me and say I'm stupid and give me an idea, but when I'm watching these committees, like if I'm moving around trying to, I have no idea what they're talking, you gotta listen forever to figure out, oh, they're on this bill. It would sure be helpful in a transparency, since they want us to zoom everything, if if somewhere on that screen they would say, we are discussing House Bill Fifty or House Bill Four, so that I don't have to listen forever to finally, because you're jumping around trying to, trying to track where you're at, and you never know where they're at. It's very frustrating.
And actually, that suggestion was made in committee the other day, and Representative Ezell volunteered to hold up the sign.
Right.
She did that a couple of times.
Well, and they used to do that.
Hard to believe with candy, but she did. But but that's okay. But yes, if, and and that's, and and Commissioner Henry, that that suggestion has been made.
Okay, good.
I'm not sure what they were talking about, how how they could actually put that up on the screen. Now, they were looking at it.
I noticed on the screen, there's a committee. Why couldn't, I mean, surely these guys are.
It's listed at the top.
Right.
Yes. And so that suggestion has been made. Now, how important it is to the people who are controlling that process will only see. But I can tell you that Representative Ezell is actually holding the sign up, so people know what's going on when it's in, when the committee, when she's in.
But you only see it when she talks.
Correct.
Because you're bouncing around.
Exactly. You're you're.
I mean, the whole thing's frustrating and not transparent, which is the democratic.
And that's why I do what I do every day, because what I do is I go down and I put the bill that's in the committee, and then I put where it's look, where it is supposed to be, and I'll qualify that. Where it's supposed to be on the agenda is not always where it is, because if something may get changed, just switched, then they move it up quickly. So if those are in the top three, I call, and I'm watching that committee very closely on this, these screens to make sure that it's not, and trying to read lips and listen at the same time to see if they're switching on me. But you're you're, that's, it's a challenge to all of us who are in this business, uh, that are doing it twelve, fourteen hours a day.
Yeah. You would think, though, with all our advances, that would be pretty easy to pull off.
Sometimes I'm wondering if they want to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, when you see bills, I'm not trying not to get personal, but you see bills that have six or seven or eight thousand people that are in opposition and three or four that are for it, and it still gets passed?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Obviously, in my simple opinion, it's not the will of the people, it's the will of the platform. So, okay?
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Appreciate it.
Do you want to say my chair bills?
Every, well, there's a few that I need to, and but I wanted to discuss a couple of things with you also. Well, first and foremost, since this, I guess, is part of, I can't, you can't ask me questions or anything if we go into the elected official thing. I'll just go ahead and give a report now. Captain Martinez, I I'm assuming that everybody understands that he was involved in a, we had a violent encounter with a suspect, and he was injured. He is, I'm waiting for updates on him. He had to go to, ended up having to go to Lubbock for, he he possibly has some severe injuries from it that we weren't initially thought it was that bad. So just keep him in your thoughts. So, and I I'll I'll keep y'all updated through the county manager. So, yeah, Commissioner Rebecca Long and I were gonna head up to Santa Fe, you know, like we normally do before the legislative session, for the executive board usually for N M C usually meets. And we were going to, but unfortunately, the the, uh, those walls that don't work, the those fences and and stuff that were put up at Santa Fe, they encompassed New Mexico County's offices, too. So we, instead of going through the checkpoints just to go in and try and meet, we decided not to do that, which was very disappointing, uh, because I think we could have done some, something very productive, talking face-to-face with Steve. I haven't seen Steve Copeland, I don't know how long. It's it's crazy. But we are meeting as in the 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 small executive committee of New Mexico Counties. We we meet virtually every Thursday to discuss what's going on and what's happening. I think this Thursday is gonna be pretty chaotic because of the sheer volume of bills that were dropped yesterday and and continuing on through today. We're trying to sift through them. Um, I'm I'm on, looking through constantly. I'm having to put off business at the office, and and thank goodness I have Alan Griffith there to handle it for me, so that I can look and try and digest some of this stuff because, and and I didn't even see the one that that Jerry was talking about, the, I haven't even seen that one yet, the 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 camera bill. Copeland just sent me Senate Bill Two Twenty-seven, the law, police reform. This is, this is, it it's insanity that is being pushed by folks who have obviously no idea what happens in law enforcement. It will require law enforcement to to give, uh, to prove that we did use de-escalation techniques before we used force. So Captain Martinez, when he was about to be rammed by a vehicle, he would now be under the gun to prove that he tried to de-escalate the situation somehow before he used force against the individual that was trying to kill him. It it's a frightening one. There's also, and I don't know the name of it and 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 I, or the the designation of it, but it started out, and it looks very innocuous, about the, uh, game and fish laws, which everybody knows our game and fish laws are kind of hard to interpret. I I don't hunt, because I can't, I'm like, I'm not even gonna bother. Too many cops have gotten in trouble for hunting and doing it wrong. So, but anyway, you go down through it, and it gets into where you dig down farther and farther and farther, and it's about sex offenders and mandatory sentencing and doing away with mandatory sentencing, allowing judges to not have to do it. This is some frightening stuff right here. One to keep a close eye on is.
What bill was that one?
I don't know. I I I I would have to, I I probably should have written down some notes, but I I was hurriedly going through them last night, because there were so many dropped. The the mayor, Senator Ivy Soto has, he's got a marijuana. He has a a marijuana bill that that he's gonna drop. Now, I like the taxation part that he put in it. I think it's a twenty-one percent tax that one-third will go to the state, one will go to the county, and one will go to the municipality. Okay, well, I, if if we're gonna do it, which we're going to, obviously, I sure do want us to get our slice of the pie. We should. Now, I guess Senator Pertle is introducing his own, and his reasoning, he's saying that it should be a lower amount of taxation, because he thinks that will drive up the black market if the taxation is high on it. I I don't know. I I'm against, I'm against recreational marijuana, period, but if we're gonna do it, we, I think we, I believe personally, and I haven't talked to Senator Pertle about this, but I think we ought to tax it pretty heavily. That's just my, I can't believe I'm agreeing with Daniel Ivy Soto, but I am. He won't return my calls, anyway. So that that one's a problem. Keep an eye out for that one. Keep an eye out, i- if if you would, on the the police reform, uh, because we tried. The the law enforcement, we tried to get our own bill in there. We have been summarily ignored, uh, with the exception of the the sheriff from Dona Anata County, uh, who was on that Civil Rights Commission. Shockingly enough to me, she actually voted against it in that commission and actually gave a a decent rebuttal to it all. So that's my segue into House Bill Four. House Bill Four is is so dangerous. I think everybody's getting beat to death. I think people on Facebook are sick of me talking about it, but it's just so important to me, not as a cop, but as a citizen, as a taxpayer. This is being, a very smart person is using this, using the the the, what happened in Minnesota, um, the Breonna Taylor case, using all of the, using all of the the anger and the frustration and the fear that's come out of these things to push forward a different agenda. House Bill Four, the so-called New Mexico Civil Rights Act, will do nothing to change law enforcement in New Mexico. Nothing. Zero. It has nothing to do with law enforcement reform. We have some work to do. And thanks to y'all, we're already doing it in Eddy County, because you already funded a a large, a a large chunk of money for me to bring a program to the sheriff's office, which I'm, we're gonna get you over there to get to see it, a use-of-force simulator. We have a tracking program for use-of-force instances. I mean, we we've done our due diligence. We've done law enforcement reform in Eddy County, like significant, real, measurable, we're gonna be able to do that. We're gonna be able to show you what we have done.
I'm really looking forward to all the commissioners get together and go through your screen check.
It, and 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 we, I'm, we're, we're ready to do it. You're gonna enjoy it. But the thing is, H B Four is not going to do any of that, because everybody's got the the buzz wor, the buzz words, qualified immunity. Qualified immunity doesn't exist in New Mexico. It's not even, it's it's not even able to be used as a defense in state court. It doesn't exist. It's a federal court, a federal thing. And I, people don't understand that. I'm trying to get that, everyone to understand that that is the truth of the matter. And all qualified immunity says, anyway, is you cannot prevail in a lawsuit against someone, against a a government entity, unless they violate a clearly established rule of law or constitutional violation. I still don't see what's wrong with that, even. I mean, you gotta know the rules. They have to be clear for you to know that you can't violate them. Anyway, this bill, all it does, all it does is open the caps. It it circumvents New Mexico Torque Plains Act, which is capped at, I think, a million five or something like that. It opened, it does away with that. And so we can have a, we can, we can settle for one dollar on a lawsuit, this county, and we can have six figures, seven figures in attorney's fees. That's what this is about. This is about money. That's all this is about, and and folks are missing that. And that's why I'm preaching and preaching and preaching and preaching, because we've done the research. Steve Copeland and Brian Moore and and Grace Phillips, and we've all sat down and we've done all this research. This is not good, and it's scary, and we thought it was dying out. It's apparently getting, we just got word yesterday that it's getting some new life, maybe, because now the Speaker's coming with some amendments to it, because everybody said, oh, this could hurt teachers? Oh, okay, well, we'll, we'll fix that. Oh, this could hurt this person, a healthcare provider? Oh, we'll fix that part. Doesn't matter. It does not matter, because when the little areas like, like Loving or Eunice or somewhere like that go, you know what? We're done. Uh-uh. We can't shoulder this liability, this, uh, shut down law enforcement. County can handle it. State police can handle it, which is what we would do, right? We would go out there and we'd handle business for them. Well, then who's gonna get sued? The county with no cap and or the state with no, because everybody demonizes state police, but state police out there, they're trying. They really are. They're trying. And but that's what's gonna happen. That's what is going on with this, and this is gonna bankrupt everybody. This will bankrupt everybody. And I just, I'm jumping up and down with it. I want, and that's the reason I'm saying, and and I'm not being insulting in any way. A lot of people don't understand exactly what it is. They don't. And that's why I'm doing my best to educate everybody, so when someone goes, well, it's gonna help with qua, no. You can say, no, it's not gonna help with qualified immunity. Qualified immunity doesn't exist in New Mexico, except in federal court. And state legislature has no, no teeth when it comes to federal court. They can't change what happens there. So be prepared if if, when folks ask you, especially if you pass a resolution, say, well, why'd you do this? Well, here's why. This isn't gonna do any good. So, anyway, that's my soapbox. So, anyway, that's my soapbox, I'll step down off of that one, but I'm gonna keep preaching it. I, I do, I do wanna thank you for what you, you did with the, looking at the, the vaccines, and I've already, I'm already reaching out to some people on that, but... I'm, I'm here to, to augment, Jerry, if, if there's something that I can help with, I'm more than willing to help you. And, and again, I'm gonna talk with Steve here in just a minute, I have direct access to Steve, we talk on a daily basis. So it's very difficult, we have no input, New Mexico counties, we're, New Mexico counties are struggling. We used to be powerful, we used to have a powerful voice, a respected voice, but we've been pushed to the side for a lot of it. That access is gone. I'm talking with two, two legislators, but on like about an hourly basis right now, trying to find out information, so, anyway. That's my thing, HB four is of the devil, that's my opinion, it's bad, it's, it's greedy, and we need to fight it with everything we have.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. As far as the budget goes, my goals, I wanna, we've, we've got a, we've got a very generous budget, thanks to y'all. I'm not gonna come in, the, the only thing I'm gonna come in looking for is, is to keep our fleet up, vehicles. I've got some building ideas that I would like, but I wanna find that within my budget now, if there's any savings or anything like that. I, I don't plan on coming, we've already discussed it, my staff and I, we're happy, very happy, and we can make it work with what we got. So that's the only thing we'll be doing, is our normal capital with the, the vehicles.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, let's do item eleven, get the travel consent agenda, and I think we could work through there, unless you need a break.
I think we've committed a burden, we're good to go.
All right.
Entertained motion to approve the travel request, request consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Second, please call for the vote.
Sorry, who's second?
The other.
Okay.
Just pick one of them.
All right. Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
All right, we don't have any emergency business at this time, we've had our legislative discussion. Are there any other elected officials that would like to talk to the commission?
I think it's, I'm exhausted, I'm, we're coming back here again. Bye.
We're out.
I'm out.
I think, in terms of county manager comments, we've had a lot of discussion about budget, monies, revenues, and those kinds of things, we've talked about, what we're trying to do with vaccinations within the county and within the constraints we've got, we've talked a lot about the bills and, and legislative sessions, so I don't know that there's anything else that I would add in that, trying to get messaging and whatnot, but if you have some questions about any of the things that we're doing, I would be willing to talk about those in the coming weeks and months. We're gonna bring to you, or we're, we're gonna get you, show you, tell you the road story, it's a great story to tell, what's been done, what's in progress, what's to be done, and the monies that we've spent to do it, and what, what our outlook is, so I, I, it's an exceptional story. Look, look for something like that towards the first part of March in part of the budget process, and then we'll talk about revenue outlooks and things like that, so, so to kinda keep with the time, if there's any other questions or feedback, I'm, I'm happy to entertain those.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Nope, none at this time, thank you.
I've got a couple of quick things. If, if we're talking about resolutions that we might want to bring before the commission, I'd be really interested in something against House Bill fifty, watching it the other day, I don't know if that's the six-five you were talking about, because it did end up six-five in committee. Dairies were against, everyone was against it, there were three people for it, and they were all the, the environmental groups. Dairies, farmers, ranchers, oil and gas, it affects our entire county and most of the folks whom have livelihoods within the county, so I would really be interested in something like that, if the board was to look at that. Of course, House Bill four is, is garbage. I would love to see, I'm interested in Pertle's bill, I know it probably won't go anywhere, but that would be an interesting bill to possibly support, if it looks like a bill. We need to read it, but, but I did find that interesting when I was looking at that last night.
It's a short bill.
Yeah, yeah. And then, of course, we did this last year, we, we put resolutions against recreational marijuana, I know we put a resolution against abortion, I don't know if the board, so if we needed, well, I'm sure we do, because we've got new board members. So if those are things that we'd like to discuss as bills, because the abortion bill, again, I think ninety percent of, of the state was against, if, if you looked at what the legislators received, and it's passing through party line votes, they're, they're not even listening to us, which what we saw with the red flag law, with, you pick a bill, they're gonna push it through because it's what they want, they don't really care what the citizens want, and that's my problem, it's not a Democrat against Republican thing, I could care less. It's a, the citizens are talking out against these, and when you got House Bill fifty, and everybody's calling in saying how bad it is for them and industry, and we're talking up north, Albuquerque folks are calling in, it's not just our side, and they're passing it party line, I have a real issue with that, because it's not the way government should operate. So those are just a few that I would love to consider, if the board would be willing to consider, and I think that's all I, I need to say. The vaccination thing has got me so angry, I'm about to break the pen flipping the cap, because we have got to get that, I want that, I seriously, if, if, unless somebody says no, that has got to hit press like today, because I want Eddy County to understand why we're not being vaccinated, and it's, it's wrong, and it's, it's just wrong, that's all I have to say.
If I could just add, I'm sorry, Jennifer, if I can be of any service to you, I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to make phone calls, talk to hospitals, just whatever you need help with, if you could keep me in the loop on where you're finding problems, I'd be happy to assist you with that.
Mr. Cross?
I would just like to say about a week, week or so ago, got a call from KRQE News, they wanted to do a, a interview with us, I was all excited about the oil and gas industry and, and how some of the legislation was gonna affect it and stuff, so I got all excited, called county manager, Al comes over to my office, we get on, the lady, I told her, I said, "We weren't gonna do the interview until she read the Arrowhead report," and so made her read the Arrowhead report before we did the interview. We get on the phone, did the interview, about forty minutes, we did, I thought we covered a lot of good points and brought up a lot of, of good points to her, and I thought, man, this is gonna be a great interview. Listen to the interview that, to the report that night on the KRQE News, and they used two sentences. So, so I don't know, but...
That's about how the whole state process is going, you get one little soundbite out of an hour's discussion.
Yeah.
Probably taken out of context.
So, that's all I have.
Mr. Beard?
I would only like to say, after my third meeting as an official commissioner, I couldn't be more pleased with what I see this county doing and how they act and how they operate. I am very pleasantly surprised, and I'll let it go with that.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. I had a lot of things, I'll, I'll chop them up. One thing, please, parents, students, everybody, please be really patient with getting kids back in school, it's gonna be a complete dumpster fire, so just be patient with school zones, everything, I know, just for anybody listening, it's gonna be, gonna be pretty tough, they've got a pretty, they've got a pretty big, a pretty big logistical problem ahead of them, so our patience as a community would be greatly, would be appreciated, I'm sure. I, I'm wondering what we're missing with all these so blatantly terrible bills, I'm wondering what is stuck in some of the other bills, so I think it's probably what we don't see will get us. And so a, a good review of, you know, in this game and fish bill that's got, I mean, my goodness, how can you, how do those two even go together? So I'm just wondering what we're missing in, in some of the other bills, what do we, what do we not see that's gonna get us? Also, I liked Commissioner Carlson's comments earlier about setting something up with some semi-majors and major oil companies, kinda sit down and visit, I'd like to be involved in any of those discussions that we have, and, and I'm sure that they're not gonna be super open in, in discussing, in discussing their, you know, full-on future plans or, or their, or their methods or, or strategies, but we can probably glean a lot of information from them about that, I wouldn't mind requesting and seeing in some of those informations. So I'm, back to, back to Jennifer, I just cannot believe that we're in the position we are with COVID. Had a little personal experience with the hospital in December the fifteenth, I missed one meeting, I had a hernia, so I'd, I had hernia surgery, I'm self-pay, I went in, the company's twenty-three thousand bucks, but if I paid in cash, it would be twenty-three hundred, I paid them in cash, twenty-three hundred bucks, then they just sent, then they decided to send me another bill and says, "Oh, sorry, we messed up, it's actually forty thousand, so you owe us another seventeen hundred bucks." I said, "That's, I said, "That's ridiculous." You know, I just lost it, but that's how they are, and they're just complete thugs down there, and now they're holding our community hostage. So like Mrs. Jerry Strong here, when she, when we get to working on all our press releases and everything like that, and just as Commissioner Henry said, the community needs to know that Eddy County's doing everything they can do to get COVID vaccinations into the bodies of the people that need them, into the critical people that we can get back, or schools back open, or people that have underlying conditions, or those things like that, and we are being constrained by the state of New Mexico, not only by the state of New Mexico, but being exploited by our own hospital, and, and, and them being unwilling to be our script doctor, whatever you wanna call them. And I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be said, and like you said, like we said earlier, whatever we can do to be creative and get this thing done, we need to get it done, because we are failing if we don't, if we don't do it. So, and I had a bunch of other things, like marijuana, crap, probably doesn't matter anyway, the hospitals, when you legalize marijuana, the hospital increased three hundred thirty-five percent hospitalizations, so our hospital would probably just do better. Road accidents with people, cannabis in their system increased by a hundred fifty-three percent, those are all Colorado Department of Health numbers, so I had a bunch of stuff like that. Then we've got abortion as well, and I'd just like to add that if you say that whatever is, 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 this organism, whatever that's occurring in a woman, is not, you know, is not, is not separate, well, then I would invite you to take that bit of organism and put it on Mars, and then we'll have the same group of people saying that they have found life on Mars, so I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no executive session this, this meeting, so we just have item eighteen, the German.
Make a motion, we, the German.
Second.
Motion's a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?